And we are going to continue our look at the gifts we started last week. To look at the different types of gifts. And we saw to define them the best we could, you know, the people have various definitions. And we tried to last week started to look at what these gifts are, you know, look at how we can define them. As far as scripture is concerned. And we started off last time by looking at ministry. Are you hearing me? Are you hearing me?
Yes, sir.
Good, good, good. We started to look at the ministry gifts. And we say that these ministry gifts, just reviewing quickly, are offices in the church. Leadership and influence, these gifts have to do with leadership. And influencing the believers, these are offices within the church. And we listed them and they are called, people call them the five-fold ministry. Five-fold ministries. In other words, these gifts are given to individual, right? They're given to individuals. They call them the people gifts, right? So therefore, these are what we call the ministry gifts. We then looked and tried to explain the motivational gifts. How God works in each believer to shape their persons, sorry, their perspectives on life. And motivate their work, their work, sorry, their words and action, right? Um, motivational gifts are those gifts that motivate you, motivate the believers. To greater work, encourage them. And we listed those gifts. We listed those gifts. You know, what went wrong here? Let me see. Okay, just sorry about that. Good. We lifted, we listed those gifts as prophecy, you know, serving, teaching, exhorting, giving, organization, right, or organizing. These are, the Bible didn't call them these gifts. There were theologians and other persons give them the name of motivational gifts. And you can see why they would be called motivational gifts. And the final one we looked at was what was not, we call, I'm sorry about this. This is not my computer, right? We manifestation gifts, right? How God works through a believer in a given situation to demonstrate his supernatural power. That's what we call the manifestation gifts, right? And we, we, we last week, we ended by looking at, we looked at, tried to explain the word of wisdom. We tried to explain knowledge gift, um, the word of knowledge. We tried to explain faith. We tried to explain gifts of healing, right? Um, word, sorry, working of miracles. Prophecy. Prophecy appears in both the motivational gifts and the manifestation gifts. So this week now, we want to continue to look at the discerning of spirits. And move on to look at the tongues and back in roles with gift of tongues, right? But before I go on, I want to ask you a question. I would like your participation. I'm going to ask more than a number of questions this evening. But question number one. Do you think that there are more gifts than what we have listed in the Bible, in scriptures? Let me ask it again. Think about it. Do you think that there are more gifts than what we have listed in the scripture? And I ask this because there is a prevailing view, but let me ask you first, what do you think? Not all at once, no, one person at a time. Nobody has any idea? What do you think?
I, I, Reverend Goodnight, I think I would go with what is in the scripture. Yes. So I don't think there anymore. I don't know of anymore, other than I'm using the scripture to guide me then.
So you would go with the ones that are listed in the scripture?
Right.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody who is any other view from that?
I tell you, I tell you the basis on which I would be very careful about saying there are additional gifts.
Yes.
Because what I understand from what Paul writes is that there, there are different workings, different manifestations of these gifts. A word of wisdom might be exercised in, you can predict how the word of wisdom is going to be spoken. Um, but you know is a word of wisdom because it is not flesh and blood can reveal that to you.
Right, right. And a word of knowledge too.
Exactly. And, and, and all, all, all the gifts that are going to bring glory to God have been given by one same spirit, but there are different workings of it.
All right, good. Thank you, Reverend Edwards. Now, I, I, I agree with Reverend Edwards. You know, a very outstanding theologian. And a leading, well, in those days, I think he's retired now, leading preacher. I heard him when I was in the Cayman Islands, he came to do a study. And he said this, he believes that what we have in scripture, those gifts are not necessarily the only gifts there are. I'm going to tell you who the person is, very influential. Dr. Burchell Taylor. A man that I respect and those who know him, respect him, right? But I don't, I can't agree with him. For the same reason Reverend Edwards pointed out a while ago. Right? If you take that view that there are other gifts not recorded in the Bible, you are opening up yourself to some serious thing because anybody can come up and say, this is a particular gift, this is a particular gift. So I would rather stick with those that are in scripture rather than adding any gift. So I, 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 I support those Reverend Edwards and the other person who answered, right? I believe whatever gifts are in the Bible, I go by those. And I don't seek to add anymore. Good. So we want to talk today about the discerning of spirits. The discerning of spirits. I want to read the passages again. I want us to look at the passages. Um, the first one, sorry. The King James Version. This is 1 Corinthians 12, sorry, 12 and verse 10. The KGV says, to another, the working of miracles, to another prophecy, to another discerning of spirits. Just to another discerning of spirits. And he goes on to another diverse kinds of tongues and interpretation. But all he says to another discerning of spirits. Look at what the NIV says. To another miracles, sorry miraculous powers, to another prophecy, to another distinguishing between spirits. To another distinguishing between spirits. But when I look at the NLT, which is the new literal translation, I, I kind of like how this translation puts it. The other two, KJV and NIV, nothing special, but listen what NLT says. He gives one person the power to perform miracles and to another the ability to prophesy. And listen how he puts it now. He gives someone, sorry, sorry, I didn't read it properly, I'm sorry. He gives someone else the ability to discern whether a message is from the Spirit of God or from another spirit. I like how he does that. I like how he puts it. Whether a message is from the Spirit of God or from another spirit, right? And that is really what discerning of spirit is all about. You can't leave out the Spirit of God when compared to any other spirit. And that is what the NLT does, discerning of spirit definition. This is what Derek Prince, Derek Prince is an authority on these gifts of the spirit and so forth. He says this. Discerning of spirits is the ability to recognize, identify and distinguish between various kinds of spirits that confront us. The ability to recognize, identify and distinguish between various kinds of spirit that confront us, that I believe is an important gift in the, that, that, that is needed in the church, especially in the period in which we live. It is essential that this gift be activated in the church. Because all sorts of things, all sorts of spirits are coming into the church. And saying thus saith the Lord, we have to be careful. Not everybody that says thus saith the Lord is necessarily speaking from the Spirit of the Lord. You have to understand that. Ephesians, somebody read Ephesians chapter six for me. Turn to, turn your Bibles to Ephesians chapter six. And I want us to read, somebody read for me loudly and clearly, Ephesians six, 10 to 12. Go ahead.
So Ephesians 16 to 12 said, finally, I'm reading from the NIV.
Okay.
Finally be strong in the Lord and in his mighty power. Put on the full armor of God so that you can take your stand against the devil's scheme. For our struggle is not against flesh and blood, but against the rulers, against authorities, against the powers of this dark world and against the spiritual forces of evil in the heavenly realms.
Right, that's the kinds of spirits that we are dealing with in the church of the Lord Jesus Christ. And let me tell you something about the book of Ephesians. Let me say this. Somebody might know it already, remind you. The book of Ephesians was not written to any particular church, right? If you look at the introduction to the church at Ephesus, that was an inserted um, um, address. It was not written to the church at Ephesus. It was written to the churches, it was, it is, if you read the commentary on Ephesians, they tell you that it was written, it was a circular letter. A circular letter to be written, sorry, to be read in all the churches. To be read in all the churches, written to a group of church, for example, in a place called the Lycos Valley. Right? A number of churches were there. It was a circular letter. And if you look at, if, if you, if you outline the book in the, in, in, in the first chapter, Paul says that the church is the body of Christ. The second chapter, he says, the church is a temple of Christ. In the third chapter, he says, the church is the mystery of Christ. In the fourth chapter, he says, the church is the humanity of Christ. In the fifth chapter, he says, the church is the bride of Christ. And in the sixth chapter, he talked about the church being the army of Christ. So it is a general letter. And if you notice, Paul did not address any individual in the book of Ephesians. The, what we call Ephesians. So it was a circular letter. The point I want to make, that Paul was writing to all the churches. And therefore, it applies to us, the, 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 the challenges we face is a spiritual one. And we are wrestling against various spirits. That is why the, 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 the gift of discernment is an important gift in the body of Christ. Turn to Acts chapter, sorry, 16. Acts chapter 16. I want us to read and look at from verse 16 to 18 for me. Somebody read for me. Acts chapter 16, from verse 16 to 18. Somebody read it.
Good night. Did you say chapter 16 verse?
It's, it's on the screen.
Okay, I read.
Yes.
From the King James Version.
Go ahead, yeah, doesn't matter, yeah.
That you submit yourselves unto such and to everyone that helpeth with, with us and laboreth.
Acts chapter 16?
Oh, sorry. It was the 16th. Okay, here it is.
Yes.
And it came to pass, as we went to prayer, a certain damsel possessed with spirit of divination met us, which brought her masters much gain by soothing saying. The same followed Paul and us and cried, saying, these men are the servants of the most high God, which shew unto us the way of salvation. And this did she many days, but Paul, being grieved, turned and said to the spirit, I commanded thee in the name of Jesus Christ to come out of her. And he came out the same hour.
All right, you can pause there. Do you see what is happening? Paul, no, you know, where there is not the spirit of discernment, you would raise your hand and say, praise God, that's a word from the Lord, that's confirmation. Right? Because she was not saying anything that was wrong, right? She, but she kept on saying that every evening of the meetings. Paul, because the spirit, ah, sorry, the gift of discernment, discernment of spirit was present, he was able to discern. That even though she was saying something sound right, sounded good, but this was not from God. And you and I know that the spirit, that the enemy can imitate what God or what Jesus does. But Paul, the spirit or the gift of discernment was evident in Paul's ministry. The, you know, there's another story. It found in Matthew 16, I think. You remember when Jesus told Paul, I'm sorry, told Peter that he had to suffer many things and die? What did Peter say? And, and, and everybody remember what Peter said? Peter opposed and said, that's not of the Lord, that shouldn't happen. What was Jesus' response? Anybody remember Jesus' response? Anybody remember?
He rebuilt him, he rebuilt him.
Exactly.
He built behind the Satan.
Ah, he was not calling Peter Satan, you know. So, some people believe that he was calling Peter, no, no. He was speaking to the spirit that was using or was speaking through Peter, right? Spirit, the, um, um, discernment was evident there, right? Because Peter was speaking. So the point I'm making is that, I, I, and, and one cannot overemphasize this, you know, that we need this gift to be operational in the body of Christ. Very important. And we must pray that the Lord raises up persons with that gift in the body of Christ. And you know, I, let me say this, I believe there are persons with that gift in the church. I believe that. But sometimes humanness gets the better of us and we're afraid to operate in that gift. Chances are, there are some of you listening to me this evening who have had experiences and you realize that this is not of God. Or you didn't say anything. Perhaps you're afraid. Humanness, again, takes over. I, I, I'm going to give you an example, an illustration, myself. I remember I was doing an all-night prayer meeting at Kingston Church. And something came to me. I have to confess that I fail in that area. A spirit, the spirit said to me, there's somebody here, listen carefully, there's somebody here who has a problem with her legs. It's hurting her badly. Call her and pray for her. No. My humanness, right? Said, boy, I'm not sure, you know, I'm telling you the truth. I didn't do it, right? Did you know that before that service was over, before that service was over the morning, somebody got up in the church and said, God heal them nevertheless, you know? And she said that God healed her because when she came to church, her legs were killing her. She didn't even know she could stand up. You see what I'm saying? So sometimes it is our humanness that causes us to fail, our nervousness, or because you wonder, women who want this one, so, and it's not that. If you feel, I've learned from my experience. And anytime I feel to pray for somebody, I am going to pray. I have learned, it will never happen to me again. I say that to say this, sometimes we have the spirit of discernment. We know when certain things are wrong, but we're just, we're just afraid to act on it. We must begin, and, and, and it's amazing, you know, you are going to know your gift when you begin to act. You have to act. You have to act. And as God blesses you in that particular gift, you know what your gift is. So therefore, we need this gift of discernment. Prince, Derek Prince tells us, or gives to us, the purpose, what do you think are the purposes of the gifts? First of all, he says, this gift of discernment is given to lift the veil, that veil, that veil spell, veil that covers the unseen spiritual world. Forgive the spelling of this thing here, right? The computer just mad, right? To lift the veil that covers the unseen spiritual world. That's what the gift, one of the purposes of the gift, to uncover the, 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 the evil spirits, the wicked spirits, the lying spirits, right? Many persons in the body of Christ have acted on a word that they believed came from God. Ultimately, they realized it was not from God. To lift the veil that covers the unseen spiritual world. Number two, to protect us from deception. This gift is given to protect us from deception. Be, Paul does not want us to be ignorant. And what the devil wants to do is to deceive us. And this gift is given to individuals in the church. So that they can, they, they, they can know when it is the Spirit of God. And when it is, because sometimes, okay, the, the next, the, the next, the next reason is to help the believer. This is similar to number two. Because there are young believers who are so eager sometimes that they'll listen to anybody or anything people says to them. That is why the gift is given, to help the believers to mature in Christ. And I believe this evening that the gift of discernment is needed in the body of Christ. The gift of discernment is needed in the body of Christ. I want to go back to a question last week that, um, what's your name?
Lacy.
Lacy, right?
Lacy, Lacy.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Lacy, I'm sorry, you know, you know, I know you're here, right? All right, Lacy, tell me the question again. Go ready with discernment. Tell me the question. Sorry, answer the question. You still there? Lacy? She's not there.
No, I am telling that it was Lacy, um.
Yeah, so wait, wait, is Lacy there?
I don't know, she's on.
I think I saw her on. All right, apparently she's not there. Okay, good. So the, the, when people say things to you and say, the Lord said, look here, I, I have a position, you see? Listen to me. I have a position. When somebody tells me that the Lord says, I am careful. I'm careful. I'm careful. Right? I'm careful. And if you come to me and said to me, the Lord tells you. To do something. Or somebody else tells you that the Lord wants you to do something. I am, I, I, I'm careful with that. Because I don't want to say the Lord didn't tell you. Right? I have to be careful, but then. The spirit of discernment will help me to help you. So whether it is the Lord or not. Right? But I have to, when you tell me the Lord say, I have to go and pray about it. Right? Because we have to be careful, that is where the spirit of discernment is needed in the body of Christ. Many believers have gone astray because they were deceived by the enemy. Deceived by the enemy. Right? So that is the, the, the spirit of discernment, any questions on that? Any question on that? Alright, good. So having looked at the spirit of discernment, let me now move. To something else, the next one. Let me, let me move to the next one. So the spirit of discernment, and the next one is tongues and interpretation. Tongues and interpretation, the gift of tongues and interpretation. And let me say this at the very outset. No doctrine. Has created more controversy. Than this doctrine of tongues and interpretation. There's no doctrine, of all the doctrines I have taught. None has created so much controversy, a controversy. As the doctrine of tongues and interpretation, the gift of tongues and interpretation. The one that comes closer to, to this is, um, eschatology, the doctrine of last things. But this doctrine of tongues, gift of tongues and interpretation. And I am certain you have heard various views. Various teachings on the doctrine and the other gift of tongues and in gift of interpretation. Right? You know, over the years, what I have noticed, what I have noticed. I have noticed that it is one of those gifts or doctrines that we believe until we go to seminary. We accept the gift of tongues. We speak in tongues, we interpret. But there is for, for, I, I, I dare say. That most of the students who have been to seminary, well, I, I only know of GTS. From these Pentecostal churches, when they leave seminary, they have a shift in belief. When it comes to tongues and interpretation. I have seen that over the years. So I want us to discuss this evening, the whole idea of gift and gift of tongues and interpretation. But I want to ask you a question. I want to ask you a question, and I want, I want you to answer me, don't take too long either, time is important, right? But I want to answer me. How do you view tongues and interpretation? What is the gift of tongues? Let me ask you that. What is your understanding? They don't have to be right, you don't have to be right, so talk, I, I, I want to hear you talk to me, right? What is your understanding of the gift of tongues, first of all? What is your understanding? Don't take too long. You must have an understanding, I've been in tongues church for a long time. What is your understanding? You want me to call some names, I know some names, you know, I know them a long time.
I, I. Good night again.
Good evening.
Okay. So I have two, two views.
Two views, I hope, I hope they're not opposite views.
I don't think so, they are.
Alright, go ahead, let me hear you.
Well, one is that tongues is given to you. If you are in a situation like you travel to another country. And you are not able to communicate because of language barrier.
Mm-hmm.
You will get the gift of tongues to communicate. That's one.
Hold on, no, that's, that's a deep thought, you know. That's a deep thought, because you are saying to me now that tongues are given to help you. To what, minister to other people of different language?
Yes.
Alright, alright, okay, let, let me not say anything because I'm going to deal with that later on, next week, God's willing. Wha- wha- what's your other view?
And the other view is, um. A spiritual connection with God.
Explain what you mean by that.
That you are, he's actually speaking to you, so you're having a, a conversation with him. So it's, it's, um, the person's around you are not able to hear what is going on.
I understand which one.
I understand what is going on, but you are having that communication with, with God.
So you are saying then that for you, the gift of tongues is a prayer language?
It is.
The gift of tongues is a prayer language, and the gift of tongues according to you is to. Communicate with people.
Right, that's two views I have of it.
Alright, good, I, 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 I don't want to answer you yet, but I'm gonna say. The, 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 the second one is a prayer language, but. No, if I answer it, I'm gonna say that's not the gift of tongue, but I'm gonna come back to that later on, okay? Okay, somebody else, quickly, quickly.
Okay, Rev.
Yes.
Gift of tongues.
Yes.
Um, like in worship.
Uh-huh.
You will break out in tongue, in tongues, but.
When you say break out in tongue, you can break out in, like, you break out in flow or something like that.
But it's as in tongues.
Okay.
Worship, so people around you wouldn't understand, but God would know. He's gonna get that big joke. And, um, but the, 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 the gift.
Uh-huh.
If, I, oh, I understand it. When you speak more than one tongues. That is able to be interpreted, like you, you, you worship.
Yeah, what do you mean by more than one tongue?
Okay, there are different, there are different, um, languages, if you listen to, to when people speak. Can't hear the difference, like different language.
Uh-huh.
Right, so.
Okay, so you are saying, okay, to finish that, when you speak in different tongues, what do you say that to that?
Right, I think, I think, um. That, 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 that tongue will be, that, that is.
That's a gift of tongue.
To be inter- i- interpreting. But there are, there's another tongue here when you worship, um.
That's not the gift of tongue.
No, that is worship, so, no, you, you will be able to edify anybody, you are just worshiping God.
Edify yourself.
Interpreted, you, you speak different, like different languages then.
Alright, thank you, Isabel, so, okay, somebody else, quickly, interesting, interesting, somebody else, quickly.
Alright, for me, Rev, I, 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 I think that there's two things to tongue. It, it's like when God want to speak to the church.
Yeah.
Somebody might burst out in tongues.
Okay.
It's speaking in tongues. When God want to give the church a message.
Yes.
And then now the next one for me, when I'm at a place where I am, oh, woman, first to know.
I don't know.
It's like the overdrive, we can't keep it. It is so real. But I, it, 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 it can be personal and it can be, hmm, a lot, a lot corporate, but more like a public thing.
Alright, good, le- 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 let me get two more quickly. Can I get two more? I want to hear what you're thinking. No man, no man, two for, what do you understand, the question is simple, you know, what do you?
Horace has his hand up, or had his hand up.
I'm sorry.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening, sir, yes, sir.
I believe that there are two sets of tongues.
Two sets of tongues?
Yes.
Could you explicerate?
I believe that one set.
Mm-hmm.
Categorized. Um, as tongues of angels. And another set is categorized as tongues of men.
Okay, that's interesting.
Well, the script says that, the wife speak with tongues of men and of angels.
Uh-huh.
I believe that.
Okay, I get, yeah, I get, I get that, yes.
The tongues of men.
Uh-huh.
Are tongues. That can be identified, it's given spiritually, but it can be identified, another language.
Hmm.
That can be interpreted.
It's a language?
That can be interpreted.
Well, okay.
The tongues of men.
If, yeah, if it's a language, you don't need interpretation, you just need translation.
Translation, okay, well, let's say.
There's a difference between interpretation and translation. Um, if, if it is in, if it is, if it is tongues of men, it can be translated. If you go to Acts chapter two, when they came and the, the apostle were speaking. There was, okay, let, let me not deal with that until I get there.
Those are tongues of men, I understand that to be.
Right, and that, that, that it's translation, they were able to translate that to what, they understood.
Yes.
Not interpret.
They're not incomprehensible, they are, they are.
Say, the tongues of angels now are those that we recall unknown tongues.
That cannot be.
Yeah, right, but they also are interpreted, right? Alright, I'm gonna come back to that, one, one other person quickly and then I move on, to say what I'm saying. Anybody else? Time is going. Alright, let me, let me move on then, good, I listen to, listen to what you say, and, and I, 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 I will say some things this week. And then next week, God's willing, I am going to answer what I call frequently asked questions. About the baptism of the Holy Ghost and tongues, right? One of the questions I'm going to answer, must we always, must it always be unknown tongues, right? We're going to look at that next week, but this week, let me say a few things here. Now. First thing I'm gonna say to you is this. The baptism of the Holy Spirit is different from the gift of tongues. The baptism of the Holy Spirit is different from the gift of tongues. Right? It is not called a gift, sorry, it is not called the, 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 the gift of the Holy Spirit, you know. It is never called a gift, the charisma of the Holy Spirit. It is called the charisma of, sorry, charisma of tongues, not the charisma of the Holy Spirit. Turn to, turn to Acts two, quickly for me, please, verse thirty-eight. Find Acts two and verse thirty-eight. Alright, le- 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 okay, let me just say what it says. It says, um, repent and be baptized in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, and you shall receive the gift of the Holy Spirit. The word gift there is Doron, not charisma. So it is never called the charisma of the Holy Spirit. It is called the Doron, the gift of the Holy Spirit. But the tongues is the charisma of tongues. So I'm making a statement that the baptism of the Holy Spirit is not the same. As the gift of tongues. And then, in, in addition to that, let me say this. Not because you speak in tongues mean it doesn't, sorry. Not because you speak in tongues means that you have the gift of tongue. Let me say it again, think about what I'm saying. Not because you speak in tongues means you have the gift of tongues. When you are baptized with the Holy Spirit, you speak in tongues. But speaking in tongues does not mean you have the gift of tongues. Right? If you look in, in, and I'm just gonna tell you, next you can get back to it. If you look in Acts chapter two. They spoke in tongues. And as Horace was saying, let us say the tongues of men. But there is something interesting about that, and let me say this about it. When, lis- listen carefully, please, I want to get what I'm saying. When the disciples received the baptism of the Holy Spirit. When they received it, it was unknown tongues. Let me say it again, because I want you to understand. When they received the baptism, it was unknown tongues. Nobody knew what it was, nobody knew what they were saying. It was later in the day when it was noised abroad that these guys came. And they then recognized it to be their language, Acts two. Initially, it was unknown to the disciples. They didn't know what language they were speaking. But later on in the day, when these guys came and heard and said, but wait, these men are speaking in our languages, but they didn't know that. Alright. Let's establish that, that the baptism of the Holy Spirit is different from the gift of tongues. Second thing I want to establish is this. Listen carefully again, I, I have it on the board, on the, on the screen, the gift of tongues. The gift of tongues is the only gift. That has a prerequisite apart from being saved. The gift of tongues is the only gift. That has a prerequisite apart from being saved. What is the prerequisite to have the gift of tongues? Anybody want to take up that challenge? What is the prerequisite to have the gift of tongues?
Is it that you have to first be baptized with the Holy Spirit, Rev?
Why?
Because the gifts need, the gift need to operate through the spirit.
Through the tongues?
Yeah, yes.
You are correct, you are very correct, you couldn't be any more correct. But listen, yes. If you are not baptized in the Holy Spirit with the initial evidence of speaking in tongues. Then you are not, I, I, I don't wanna say qualified, but you cannot get the gift. You must first have the Doron before you can be given the charisma. You must first have the Doron before you can give the charisma. I'm going to go into detail with that, God's willing, next week, right? But I just wanna make two broad statements. Baptism of the Holy Spirit is different from the gift of the tong- tongues. And the gift of tongues is the only gift that has a prerequisite. Every other gift, sorry, apart from, from salvation, the, every other gift, you must be. Every other gift, sorry, apart from, from salvation, the every other gift, you must be saved. Good. Let me just make, say one other thing before I dismiss you this evening, right? I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you three views, three views, and I'm, I'll end there tonight. I'm going to give you three views on the baptism of the Holy Spirit, three views, right? The first view is what we, what I call the liberal view. The liberal view. These are people who don't believe in the miracles in the Bible. That's why they are called liberals, right? They are, um, they, 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 they're not conservatives, but they are totally opposed to the miracles in the Bible. They are called liberals. What do they believe? They say, one, there is no gospel plus anything else. They don't believe in the baptism of the Holy Spirit. There is no gospel plus. That's foolishness, right? No gospel plus. They say there is no higher class Christians, which I think is a misinterpretation, because they are saying, there are some people who are teaching that if you, 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 when you are baptized with the Holy Ghost, you, you are higher class Christian. Nobody says that. But liberals argue there is no higher class Christians. And they use some verses, right? They use some verses to, but I really want us to read them. Somebody find Romans eight and verse nine for me, please. Somebody find that one quickly. Somebody find First Corinthians, I don't, okay, leave her that one. I'm sorry. Oh, boy, sorry, sorry about that. Romans eight and verse nine. Somebody read from Romans eight and verse nine.
But he are not in the flesh, but in the spirit. If so be that the spirit of God dwell in you, now if any man have not the spirit of Christ, he is none of his.
Right, so they say they use that verse to defend their argument that there is no baptism of the Holy Spirit. That is what they call the baptism of the Holy Spirit. The liberal views, that is what they call. If, 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 if you don't have the spirit of Christ, you are none of his, and they use that verse along the one in verse in First Corinthians twelve. I don't remember the verse, but it say you are baptized into one body by one spirit, that's the verse. If you can find it, you can read it, right? First Corinthians twelve, right? Now, so they say there is no baptism. That is the baptism. That's what they call the baptism of the Holy Spirit. But you and I know that's a wrong interpretation of this passage, right? But they hold that view. So there is no baptism of the Holy Spirit, they say, okay? Quickly, the other view, the other view is what we call the Unitarians view. Anybody knows another name for Unitarians?
Nope.
Jesus only. Jesus only.
Jehovah's Witness.
Well, two, no, no, because Jehovah's Witnesses do not believe in the Spirit. They believe this spirit is a force. They're not, they're sorry, they do not believe the personality of the spirit, not a person, right? They don't believe in the personality of the spirit. They don't believe in Father and Son, right? So they, they, they don't believe that there's any Holy Spirit. It's a force. The Unitarians are Jesus only, and they are called Unitarian, as the name suggests, Jesus only, right? And what do they believe about the baptism of the Holy Spirit? One, they believe it is needed for salvation. So you are not saved unless you speak in tongues. That's what Jesus only believe. You're not saved unless you speak in tongues. One, a person came to me one day and she said to me, brother Haman, at my workplace, somebody was telling me, she didn't tell me who it was, but she said, somebody was telling me, if I was going to her church, she would speak in tongues long time. Because she tried to be, to be filled with the Holy Spirit. I said to her, you said Jesus only, right? She said, yes. Because for them, baptism and speaking in tongues give you salvation. If you don't speak in tongues, you will, you are not saved according to Jesus only people, Unitarians. They say that. Secondly, what a baptism also needed for salvation, right? And you are baptized in the name of Jesus. So they argue baptism in the Holy Spirit is needed for salvation. So you must speak in tongues. You must speak in tongues, right? What a baptism also, you must baptize, and we believe you have to be baptized too. I must baptize in the name of Jesus. So that is their view on the baptism of the Holy Spirit. And the final view I'm going to give you, it's our view, our view, right? What do we believe? When I say we, the Church of God of prophecy, the New Testament Church of God, and all of those churches, all of those churches that came about during the latter part of the nineteenth century into the twentieth century, right? All of these churches, and they came about because of what was known as the Azusa Street Revival. The Azusa Street Revival, all of these churches, right? And if you look in their constitution, you're going to find, they say that we believe in the baptism of the Holy Spirit with the initial evidence of speaking in tongues. By the way, let me drop this in here. Let me drop this in. Did you know that the, oh, sorry, the Jesus only, those, they were part of that movement? They came out of the Azusa Street Revival, you know, Jesus only. They broke away when they discovered that you have to baptize in Jesus' name. They came out of that too, but more, more, more on that than that. Now, so what do we believe? We believe baptism is baptism in the Holy Spirit. Now, the gift of tongues now, baptism in the Holy Spirit is subsequent to salvation. That is, it comes after you are saved. The baptism, and when you look through scripture, it shows that those who were baptized with the Holy Spirit were first saved. We believe that baptism of the Holy Spirit is subsequent to salvation. We believe it does not save us. It does not save us. Baptism of the Holy Spirit. Paul, Peter said, repent and be baptized, every one of you, and ye shall receive the gift of the Holy Spirit. So it is subsequent to salvation. Thirdly, it is a second work of grace. That is where it is called charismatic, charisma, charis, grace. It is a second work of grace. That's what we believe, right? And we need the born again experience and the baptism in the Holy Spirit as power for witnessing, power for witnessing. We call it empowerment for service. Listen to what Acts says, Acts one and verse eight. Says three things, three things I'm going to end with those, three things. Act one, verse eight tells us. Number one, it tells us about the promise of the power of the baptism. The promise, he says, but ye shall receive power. The promise of the power, ye shall receive power. And then he, the, the, the verse speaks about the prerequisite for that power. It says, after that, the Holy Ghost is come upon you. The promise, ye shall receive power. The prerequisite, after the Holy Ghost is come upon you. And then we see the purpose of power, and ye shall become witnesses unto me, right? So that's what we believe. That's what we believe and that's what we teach, right? Now, God's willing, next week, I'm going to answer, n- next week, some frequently asked questions about the gift of the Spirit and the baptism of the Holy Ghost. I am going to, um, um, see if I can create a little diagram to illustrate what I mean when I say that everybody can receive the Holy Ghost's baptism, but not everybody has the gift of tongues. The church can speak in tongues, but not everybody who speaks in tongues has the gift of tongues. God's willing, next week I will deal with that. Any questions?
Yes, Rev, just one little thing.
Yes.
Um, and it's okay, we're going to talk about it next week. The, I hear you mentioned two times, um, the baptism of the Holy Spirit with the initial evidence of speaking in tongues. I don't know if you have time to clarify that part now or, or next, or wait till.
I could clarify it now, but if I clarify it now, I will answer it next week and have it for next week.
That's fine. I can't wait. If you're gonna, if you're gonna talk about it next week, I'll wait.
Because you see, um, um, the question I'm going to answer, hmm, is speaking in tongues the only evidence of the baptism of the Holy Spirit, right? I'm going to an- ask that question, the frequently asked question. Must I always speak in tongues? You understand?
Okay.
God's willing, I'm going to answer that question next week. Okay, any other question? I could do this weekend, but I love to, it, it's going to take too long, because I have to use passages to back up my argument. Do you understand? And it's not.
That's fine.
Okay, good. Any other question?
Rev, could I have something about discernment?
Yeah, you, yeah, you can answer the question again. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, you know, sometimes persons will, you get an intuition. And you know, we say, your mind tell us, you know, for the something, your mind tell us to do something or whatever. And they say, some people will say that you have a discerning spirit. Is that?
You're about to see, you've already established your mind, are you? You hearing me?
Yeah, I hear you, but you just let him know sometime.
Yeah, people say that.
Yes.
But, you know, in a sense, um, one of the ways in which we establish, not establish, which confirm the gift we have, is all people react to it. You understand?
Okay.
That is, that, 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 that's one of the, the ways in which we confirm our gifts. There is a kind of agreement, right? Uh, but people around you, the body of Christ I'm talking, recognize. And you minister to them, you follow? So in a sense, but I don't know if people can just come and tell you, so you have the gift of discernment like that. People have to observe your activities. Uh, I don't know if I'm making myself clear.
Uh, yes, sir, you're making yourself clear.
Right.
Um, like you're in church, and you know, something going on, and you get a, 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 and, and intuition to do something.
Right.
But, you know, you're fearful, you don't want to get up and do anything, you know, that bring attention to yourself, and then a couple of minutes after, somebody get up and do the same thing that you were, your mind.
Right, remember I gave an illustration about myself earlier on?
Yes.
Right, yes. So you know, I am saying, I am not saying it is not the, um, the gift. You follow? But then you have to keep operating.
Operating it.
In the gift. And then again, I'm going to say to you, as I said earlier on, do not allow your humanness to overtake you. If you feel, the, i- if you feel a spirit is moving, sometimes it's more than your mind. But sometimes we think it's our mind, you understand?
Mm-hmm.
And, and, you know, in Acts chapter thirteen, you know, I, I, I invited you to read that passage. It says, as they prayed, or as they prayed and ministered, right? As they, I'm talking about Peter and, um, um, Peter, so I'm sorry, Paul and Silas, as they pray, not Silas, Paul and Ba- Paul and Barnabas. As they prayed and ministered, the Holy Spirit said, separate unto me, Paul and Barnabas, unto the work whereto I have called them. But they were not just sitting down. Do you follow? They're ministering. They were involved in ministry. So you cannot just sit down and expect that you have to be involved in ministry. And, uh, uh, as all the spirit leads you, you, if it, if it is not the spirit, you know, you won't continue. Do you follow? I think it was, was it, was it, um, was it, who said that? In Acts chapter four, I think it was. Acts chapter four. What's his name? Gamaliel, Gamaliel said, leave them alone. If it is not of the Lord, it will die, right? He said that to the council, okay? So, but, but you must not shy away from ministering, you know, if you feel to minister. Have you felt that more than once?
Yes, I have.
Right, I, I thought so. You mustn't shy away from ministering, right? Because that's the only way you're going to know, and you're going to develop the gift, okay?
Okay, sir.
Okay, well, any other question?
Yes, um, at the beginning, you refer to, say, and the, the, um, New Living Translation has that, 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 um, version that gives a more accurate.
New Literal Translation, N L T.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Um, of, of, um, verse ten.
Yeah, yeah.
Corinthians twelve, where it says, he gives someone else the ability to discern whether a message is of the spirit of God or from another spirit.
Hmm.
I, I didn't settle so well with me because, um, the, 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 the Greek for, um, spirit, which is humor, goes beyond message.
Yeah, great, yeah. I thought of that too. In other words, it's more than message.
Yes.
More than message, activities, right?
Activities and presence of angels and demons and all.
Right, exactly. But because of the, the distinction that he made, the others were just, um, a statement with no, not, not clear to my mind, you understand? But I think he, he made the distinction, right? So that's why I, 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 I consider it to be more closer to the, to the, to the definition given by Derek Prince. Is that what I'm saying?
I get you.
Yeah, all right. Okay, thank you very much, Brother Edwards. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. We are going to ask for Sister Barbara to close in prayer for us. Barbara, you still on?
Barbara, go and sleep.
No, I am not sleeping, Reverend. I'm, and I'm very much here. Had a problem opening my microphone, but I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sleep talking.
Guys, leave her alone, please. Barbara? No, to press the wrong button. All right. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you tonight for what you have imparted to us. We are, we ask you to give us the grace, O God, to look into these things like good, noble, burial and Christians. Hmm, and Lord, as you lead us into your truth, make us open and obedient, go where your spirit will take us. Again, Lord, we understand a little clearer Again, Lord, we understand a little clearer that the, the gift. The gifts are about building your kingdom.
Yes, Lord.
And we want to be good stewards of what you give to us. So, Lord, lead us, we pray. Lead us. In leading us, grant us the grace to be obedient.
Hmm.
Here, our prayer we ask you tonight in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.